We are now recording.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar. And as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Madam Secretary, can I have you please take the role?
Buenaventura?
Present.
Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Huser?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
Soell?
Present.
Darling?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
Trejo?
Present.
You have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Next up, I will call for public comment. So State Bar staff will attempt to call members of the public in the order that they appear in the attendee pool. For those who are participating via Zoom, you should have the functionality for virtually raising your hand. And if you wish to address the committee, please click on the hand icon now. And State Bar staff will call on you in the order that hands are raised. For those of you that are participating via phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing nine, excuse me, star nine. And again, doing so while our staff that you'd like to make a comment. And then State Bar staff will call on you and open up your microphone so you can address the committee. Due to time restrictions, we cannot allow more than three minutes for each speaker. So please note that staff will have an on-screen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. The timer three-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. And the on-screen timer will flash through the final 10 seconds. And so it does not appear that we have any advanced assignments for public comments. Could I ask? Madam Secretary to identify members of the public wishing to address this board?
Yes, we have three members of the public with their hands raised. First is Benjamin Cone.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Cone.
Good morning. Thank you. I wanted to flag for you that the Committee of Bar Examiners voted to advance, not a recommendation to circulate further changes for public comment, but to adopt the testing accommodation rules revision that they settled on with, as is for motion and that what has been advanced to you for your November meeting is inadequate and doesn't will not reform most of the issues that are present in the current rules. The because of the three-minute time limit, I will be distributing some of my points over multiple meetings in advance of that November 16 meeting to make sure that I can cover enough ground. The for the any new members of the board since this was last voted on, there were three sets of public comment that were collected. Not all commenters repeated their comments in subsequent rounds. So you shouldn't assume that the latest record that was for one comment period is complete. I highly encourage the board to read the comments from all three circulations to ensure that everyone's voices are considered. The last two of those three circulations were not yet seen by the board as far as taking action at a meeting. The Committee of Bar Examiners did not return it to the board between the second and third comment rounds. They just made their changes and put it out for the third comment round. So if you're, for those of you who are not new, you should look especially closely at both the second and third sets of comments. Those comments include not just most civil rights organizations and disability rights organizations, but a former congressman who co-authored the ADA, the California Access to Justice Commission, the Best Practices Panel for the California Department of Fair Employment and Housing, and most recently in the third public comment period, a member of the California Legislature who I know has their views shared by several other members of the California Legislature and gives particularly on-point suggestions for what's lacking in the current proposal, what it fails to address and what I think if you want to build good relationships with the legislature following their concerns over gyrity would be important to amend into the proposal before adopting it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cone.
We have Michael Sternberg.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Sternberg.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
We can.
I've been coming to these Board of Trustees meetings since August of 2022, where I've been voicing my concern about the California Bar's refusal to investigate misconduct complaints and refusal to follow the rules and procedures and policies regarding misconduct investigations. What have I accomplished in a year? Nothing. I've accomplished nothing in over a year. I've escalated complaints all the way up to the Special Deputy Trial Council in terms of bar employees themselves. And so let's talk about that for a second. Trustee Soell, you want to do the inspector general. I don't know what your latest thoughts are on that, but this is exactly why inspector general is pointless and worthless. I filed a complaint against Scott Karp for impeding the reporting of misconduct and refusal to investigate. That went to the Special Deputy Trials Council, Lawrence Del Cerro, because of course, the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel cannot investigate itself. He spent exactly zero time doing an investigation as required by the bar rules, never contacted me and instead typed up a three-page letter where over and over again, he refuses to address the fact that you guys refuse to take evidence. He cites the a closeout letter from the CRU back in August of 2022 on this complaint. By the way, that CRU letter only appeared after I started coming to the Board of Trustees meetings. And in that letter, they talked about how they can't investigate the attorney I'm complaining about because of attorney-client privilege. And Special Deputy Trial Counsel Lawrence Del Cerro reasserted that in his closeout letters. So let's talk about that for a second. Evidence Code, Division Eight, Chapter Four, Article Three covers lawyer-client privilege. Sections nine, five, six, there is no privilege under this article if the services of the lawyer were sought or obtained to enable or aid anyone to commit or plan to commit a crime or a fraud. The crime-fraud exception has been around forever. And if you guys would do a basic investigation, you would know that the mother of my children has already admitted in open court that she hired her attorney to commit a crime. Not only that, it's on YouTube on videos because we have cameras in our courtroom in Nevada, and it's also in a certified legal transcript. I'm not going to have time to go through the rest of what I want to talk about today, but I don't think that the board is serious about transparency anymore. I don't think you're serious about misconduct. If you guys were serious, you would make this an agenda item and you would invite me to come and testify about what it's been like trying to get the bar to do a basic investigation for four years. Four years. When are you guys going to make this an agenda item and when are you going to invite me to come testify about these lowlifes that you have working for you who refuse to investigate and steal from taxpayers? I do appreciate this opportunity to talk. That is a plus for the board. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for addressing this committee.
Next, we have somebody with the phone number ending in zero, zero, four, seven.
All right. That individual looks like you have unmuted yourself. Can you hear us?
Yes, good day. And the my name is Chris Black. I am a member of the public. I'm a paralegal. And I must say, I too join in the chorus of this so-called state bar appears to be nothing more than the cover-up agency for scumbag attorneys. It is so bad for the consumer. The assertion that the state bar is part of the DCA or a consumer protection agency is a sham. It is as much of a sham as many of the courts. And the reason there is that correlation between the sham of the bar and the sham of the courts is the courts are inspected with state bar licensees. The California Supreme Court is such a miserable failure. It's it's hard to even fathom that something could be as deplorable as it is unless great efforts were made. I have overseen the so-called state bar complaints for many litigants. What do you think the experience is? It goes precisely nowhere. Let's talk about scumbag Orange County where Judge Ferguson, who admittedly in text message murdered his wife in cold blood by shooting her in the chest. This is the this is like the poster child of the Orange County Court. That he's seemingly their golden child. I'm sure he's probably going to be elevated to a higher court after the the cold-blooded murder of his wife. But setting that aside for just a moment. The scumbag Orange County Bar is holding an actual meeting called "Nobody Likes Snitches Except the State Bar." Now, why is that so important? Because the recent Cal Supreme Administrative Order that came down, I think it's 2023 hyphen zero six hyphen 20 hyphen zero two, specifically said, when attorneys are engaged in misconduct and crimes, you fellow attorneys have a duty to report. The scumbag Orange County Bar has put together a course to say that nobody likes snitches. They are referring to attorneys who are doing the right thing as snitches. This is the culture you guys have created. The abject failure, actually, I mean, maybe they look up to the state bar because that is where all of the misconduct has been highlighted by the Girardi scandal. And the state bar is a criminal enterprise. It is it is wasteful of federal grants. There is federal grant fraud. It's run by so-called-
I apologize, but your time has expired.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. All right, Madam Secretary, anybody else?
Yes, we have two more members of the public who'd like to address the board. Next is Travis Kelsey.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Kelsey. If you wish to address this body, please unmute your microphone. All right. Looks like we're having some technical difficulties. We'll move on, please.
Next, we have John Mayer.
Mr. Mayer, if you wish to address the body, please unmute your microphone. And again, looks like we're unable to hear this public commenter.
We do not have any additional members of the public who'd like to address the board.
All right. Thank you. All right, going to my chair's report. I don't have anything to report other than I did make a change to the liaison assignment. I did speak with trustee Tony about stepping away from the the legislative liaison assignments due to my oversight and how many trustees were assigned to that compared to the executive committee. So neither one of those bodies met in between when that appointment was made and the change of today's date. I just wanted to announce that that change to the assignments. That is all I have for the chair's report. I'd like to now go to the Board of Trustees sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee. And we do have one agenda item. That is item six dash zero one. That's our 2023 Annual Discipline Report Review and Approval. And this is being presented by Chief Mission Officer Yuen Cheng and Chief Trial Counsel George Cardona. So if we could please promote those two individuals. All right, Mr. Cardona, welcome. Ms. Yang, I think we have you here. All right, there we go. Good morning to you both.
Good morning.
All right. Who is leading us off?
I can start.
All right.
Okay, this agenda item is for the board to review and approve the 2023 Annual Discipline Report. Georgia and I will quickly walk you through the summary of the report. George, you want to start?
Sure. So I think most of you already know what the annual discipline report is. It's required under the Business and Professions Code, which requires that we report certain statistics about the bar from the previous year, including the series of statutorily required tables that are included in the report as well as some other statutorily mandated reporting, all of which is set out here. This year's report is the essentially the reporting obligations are the same as last year. This year, we are completing the transition from calendar year to fiscal year reporting that was required as a result of some changes in the statute. So this year, the reporting is just by fiscal year for the current year and I believe a prior four years. So there's a total of five years reported. Can we go to the next slide? So the content of the report, there's a narrative that highlights some things, and that's what we're going to cover today. And then there are 15 tables, which are the statutorily required reporting tables. And then some appendices, including a glossary that defines certain terms that we use. And then these other discussions, including the methodology that was used in gathering the data for the various tables. If we can go to the next slide. So the tables focus on the performance of the discipline system and in particular OCTC. This is the summary inventory table, and it shows something that we've been reporting on. Also in our quarterly dashboards, as you can see, the two things I'll highlight here is in the second row, under the number of cases opened during the year, you can see that for fiscal year 2023, the number of cases opened increased to 17,360, returning, continuing a trend of moving up and getting us back to pre-pandemic levels. So we saw an increase there this year. The other thing I wanted to highlight was the pending at year end. As you can see, there's been a trend of our inventory of cases pending at year end. That is cases that have not been resolved within that year. And that roll over to the next year has consistently been increasing. This is the same thing that we've been reporting in our quarterly dashboard. This is a function of our case clearance rate not remaining at or above one. That is, we are not closing out a case for each new case that we open. This is something that we're working on, and this is one of our goals for the upcoming year is to increase our case clearance rate and drive down the number of cases that are rolling over at year end. If we can go to the next slide. Next slide shows meeting case processing goals. This looks at the percentage of cases closed in each year that were closed within our statutorily imposed case processing times. For non-complex cases, that's 180 days. For complex cases, it's 12 months, one year. As you can see in the chart to the right, for 2020 fiscal year 2023, we remained at 86% of the cases we closed were closed within those statutory timeframes. As you can see, that was an increase from 2019. It was the same as fiscal year 2022. That 86% was driven by two types of cases. As you can see from the next two charts, for non-complex cases, we basically remained the same. We closed 91% of cases within the statutory timeframes. And for complex cases, we actually increased the number of cases closed within the statutory timeframes from 70% to 74%. That has been one of our focuses over the last year is to try and go back and close and resolve more of our complex cases. The other thing we have been focusing on is trying to close some of the older cases that remain in inventory. We have a number of cases that have been in inventory for well beyond the 12-month period. And one of our focuses has been going back and picking those up and trying to work on some of our older cases and take them out of our inventory. So if we can go to the next slide. This shows average case processing times. As you can see, there are two lines where the trend is good. The cases closed by OCTC, there's been a gradual decrease in the average case processing time from 140 to 112 days from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2023. For cases open in OCTC at year end, in 2019, it was 219 days. It then spiked at 332 days in fiscal year 2021, and we've been working that down, and it was 272 days this year. The trend that is not good is the timeframe, the average case processing time for cases filed in state bar court, which has been going up. You can see the trend here. This too is something we're going to try and work on over the upcoming year to try and drive that number down and start turning that trend around to decrease the time. The average case processing time for cases actually filed in state bar court. So these are the summaries for case processing and inventory for OCTC. And I'll turn it over to Yuen to talk about some of the demographics that we're reporting in the ADR for the first time.
Okay, so in the September board meeting, we discussed the need to add the demographics of disciplined attorneys, and it's our first time recording in ADR. In total, the state bar obtained discipline for 243 attorneys. If you look at the total bar, total number here, 76 were disbarments, 122 were probations, 45 were reprobables, both public and private. Then we disaggregated the number by race, ethnicity, and by gender. So the upper part here is the sales is the number of attorneys who received different discipline outcomes based on either race, ethnicity, or gender here. The lower part is the percentage of each cell size represents. For example, for the first column, Asian, among 16 Asian attorneys who received discipline in fiscal year 2023, six were disbarments, seven were probations, and three were reprobables. So if you look at the percentage, this means 7% of Asian attorneys, among all the attorneys received discipline, 3% for black and African-American attorneys, and 9% for Hispanic and Latino attorneys, 67% for white attorneys, and 9% for others, 5% for unknown, which is missing data. Then if you look at the table, gender table here, 24%, I'm just going to talk about the total here, 18% of attorneys who, disciplined attorneys were women, 77% were men, 1% of other group, then 4% missing data. So how do we interpret interpreted the percentage here? We created two figures here to compare disciplined attorneys with the other two groups. One, one group is attorneys with at least one complaint. The other group was the total, the all the active attorneys. So if, again, I'm going to use this group, Asian group as an example, Asian attorneys comprised 13% of the active attorney population. Of 8% of all attorneys with at least one complaint and 7% of disciplined attorneys. And you can see that for most groups, the differences of the rate of being disciplined and being complained are minor. The differences for between men, women were much significant. Women attorneys comprised 42% of total the the total active attorney. 30% of attorneys with at least one complaint, only 18% of disciplined attorneys. So the key takeaway is based on demographic results, as we talked about the minor differences in the rates of complaint and discipline by race. But the more significant difference or more noticeable differences based on gender. If you recall the cell size, some cell sizes are very small here. I just want to point out seven for black African, black African-American attorneys. And and when we interpret the results, if we compare the results for against next year's results, we need to be mindful that the small size might fluctuate the percentage greatly. Also, we have this missing data here. All the unknown data are missing. Just when we interpret the results, be more careful of the fluctuation based on the small cell size.
All right. All right. Thank you. Any member of the Board of Trustees have any questions, Brother George or Yuen? All right, I see Mr. Miss trustee Shelby. Go with you first.
That's a question for George. Thank you, Chair. What's attributed, George, to the trend as it relates to cases filed in state bar court increasing? And maybe you shared that, but if you could explain that, that would be helpful.
I wish I had a good explanation. I don't have a good explanation as to why that is. I will say I suspect, and this is something we're going to try and look at, but I do think that some of the cases we've been filing in state bar court have been increasingly complex and have involved multiple charges over multiple time periods that have taken longer to investigate. So I think that may be driving part of it. But that can't be driving all of it because we also have filed some cases that have not been at that level of complexity. So that's one of the things that we need to take a look at over the next year and try and sort out exactly why that is and what we can do to drive that down.
Okay, and and it sounds like you you've kind of got a game plan as it relates to addressing it. Wouldn't it will take a year to sort of get to the root of the cause and the and how to address it? I don't know if I'm asking at the right way.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to try and sort out why that is, and that we may be able to do quicker. But in terms of addressing it, I do think you know, I'm hopeful that we'll start to see some trend next year, but as to exactly when in the year, I'm not sure.
Okay. And has this been raised with the legislature as it relates to past reports? Or is this the first time that you're seeing this level of increase? But I thought it was like over five years.
Yeah, no, this trend has been going on. So if you look at the slide where we have the timeline, you'll see that this trend has been a consistent one over the last five years. So this was also reflected, I believe, in last year's ADR.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Soell.
George, I'm trying to sort of reflect back on the conversation we had at the last board meeting where you reported out on attorneys that or that 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 sort of you pull out attorneys that have had multiple complaints against them, and we we do some review of that. Can you just remind me of the of the cases that we see here, that 10,557? How many, how many attorneys does that involve? That's because it's not one, it's not one for one, correct?
Oh, the the 10,000 new, so the new complaints or the inventory?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, each one of those cases doesn't represent one attorney.
No, that's that's correct. I mean, we have a number of attorneys who we get multiple complaints on. So for example, I don't think this is in the last report, but based on our quarterly dashboard, I believe roughly 5% and don't hold me to these figures, but they'll be in the next quarterly dashboard. But I believe that roughly 5% of attorneys, we see roughly 5% of attorneys having 15 or more complaints over a five-year period. And we see roughly 1% of attorneys having 40 or more complaints over a five-year period. So that should give you some indication of how many attorneys have multiple complaints.
Okay, and and those and how many of those cases represent attorneys that have multiple complaints? Okay. All right. That's what I was after. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, trustee Trejo.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's always very thorough. But I do have an observation and then perhaps a question. An observation and then perhaps the question. Um. So generally speaking, I'm concerned about. The case clearance rate. I'm concerned about. The, the number of. Cases at year end that continue to be accrued annually. I don't have institutional knowledge, as it's been, it, I, I'm sure there are a lot of reasons for it, but I think, uh, but I'm curious as to what. This has been a problem, I'm sure that you've seen over several years. Has there then, has there been done, has anything been done? Or, uh, whether it's been done just generally in regard to. Finding more effective ways to handle the problem. I, I know that there have been presentations that I've heard. And if there have, or if, what, what meaningful change, what, what changes would you feel would be meaningful? Because frankly. This is kind of unacceptable, right? I mean, for us to continue to accrue like this. It's, it's not okay. Um, it's, for me, it's slightly alarming. Um, I think that. I'm, I'm curious as to. Especially when we're in, in lieu of like. This resistance that we have in fee hikes and these things, right? Where we, we can't build our infrastructure. But what? I'm, I'm just concerned and I'm curious as to what. What, what is gonna help you meet whatever, what goals you have these, this following year to bring, to improve that case clearance rate?
Yeah, so we've take, we've done, uh, several things. Um, I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we just did a significant reorganization of, of O C T C. To change up our trial teams and how they handle cases and how those cases are assigned. So we. We moved from a system where we had twelve trial teams that were all handling all the cases the same way in terms of investigations to. Having now differentiated trial teams, which will be focused on investigations, um, which is where we hope to move cases more quickly. And fewer teams focused on the charging and pre-trial phases. Um, which is where we don't see that many cases actually moving to charging. So we've tried to reorganize our resources to try and drive an increased case clearance rate. That was effective July first. Um, this last quarter, we've seen the transition to that new. Structure. We're still going through that transition, trying to move and get people working on the types of cases that they should be working on in those teams. We're hoping to have that transition completed. And most of the people in the new teams working on the cases that they should be working on, the types of cases by mid to late November. The second thing we've done is, as I discussed at the meeting, is. We've put in place a diversion program, um, that we hope will give us increased flexibility to resolve more cases sooner. And take more minor cases out of the pipeline more quickly, so that you can devote our resources to more serious cases that need to move forward to charging. Um, that's intended to address both the case clearance rate and to a certain extent to address Trustee Shelby's question. Um, to focus the resources on those cases that are going to move to state bar court so that those can move more quickly as well. Um, so those are two things we've done in the recent past. Um, upcoming. Hopefully, starting towards the end of this year, um, uh, the. March or April of next year. Um, in connection with the S B two eleven case processing standards, um, there was a proposal for new case processing standards under S B two eleven. Um, we'll be doing a staffing study, um, to try and, and determine what resources are necessary to meet the case processing standards that we proposed in S B two eleven. Um, and the hope is that that will provide us some mechanism for trying to identify. You know, what are the resources we really need to meet those case processing standards going forward? And that's probably a longer answer than you wanted, but hopefully that addresses.
The, the only thing I think you left out, George, is that as part of that S B two eleven process. Um, there was what I would call kind of, um, not a gap analysis, but you looked at what was causing delay in case. In processing of certain cases, and those things that were under your control, meaning were not dependent on just getting more resources. Um, you did change processes beyond just the restructure, right, in order to.
Yeah.
Cut out those internal delays.
Yeah, we, we've tried to cut out some of the delays that were spotted, um. In connection with the S B two eleven case processing standard study.
So I'm just, just a quick follow-up. So are we at a point now where? It, it, is, is it just a matter of resources? You feel that you're, the, the infrastructure you have now, the systems that you have now. Operate in such a way where it really is just a function of. Allowing more resources, whatever, whether it's people or my, whatever, whatever that might be?
So I think we will, we will need to see with the reorganized structure, we'll need to see what impact that has on our case processing times, and I hope to see that hopefully over the next six months to get an idea as to. Um, if the structure is looking the way we hope it will and reducing those times. At that point, as we move forward with that, that's one reason that the, um, staffing study was delayed. So that it could be post-reorganization, post-implementation of diversion program, and after we've taken some steps to. Eliminate some of the inefficiencies that we think we can do. Um, and I think at that point, we'll get a sense of. You know, whether our current resources are sufficient, which I'm not sure they are, to meet the S B two eleven standards. Or what resources we need, and then I think we'll have the answer to that question, um, whether it is a function of more resources or whether there's other things we should be doing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Trustee Trejo, and, you know, I think it's a good reminder. That as we have new trustees on boarded, that we continue to talk about. Uh, some of the things that the, uh, you know, Office of Chief Trial Counsel have been doing, you know, really in the past. Uh, you know, several years to try and streamline these processes, and some certainly we won't be able to. Fully realize their, you know, efficiencies, um, until, you know, several months down the road. So George definitely looking forward to seeing how. Uh, these, um, these changes affect, affect these numbers. Um, Trustee Tony.
Thank you very much. I, I, I do have a, a, a few things to, um, go over on this report, so thank you very much. Um, first thing I want to say is that, you know, I am one of the, uh, people along with, uh. Um, with, uh, Trustee Sisneros, who is one of the board liaisons. To the, uh, Office of Trial Counsel, and we meet with George, um, on a quarterly basis to go over this. And I want to say that, um. While the numbers have been creeping up. I have a lot of confidence that the changes. That George is implementing. Will have positive results. And that my expectation is that. Twenty twenty-three. Is going to be peak backlog year. And going forward with each year, we should expect to see the backlog. Start to diminish. So that's, that, 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 that's kind of the expectation that I have, that we've, you know, expressed to, to George about. We wanted to give him a chance. To get his feet wet, to, you know, come in, assess things, implement new directions. And, um, so, so I just wanted to start by saying that. Um, I, on the report itself. I'm very pleased to see the demographics. Of discipline attorneys, um, as part of this report. And I'm somewhat encouraged that at least in this snapshot. It does not appear that, uh, black attorneys at this snapshot are. Uh, being exposed to disproportionate, um, discipline. In the way that previous, um, reports in the past had indicated, um, was a pattern. Of course, one year is, is, is only a snapshot, but I'm still encouraged by what I see. And, um, I think that I will bring this point in when we have future discussions about, um, reforming attorney discipline. Um. I wanted to ask, uh, just a question when we look at. Uh, the slide on case processing time. And there are three categories. When a case comes into O C T C. And after review, it is referred to the special deputy unit because of a conflict. How, how does that? Uh, how is that reflected in this report? When I looked at it, I wasn't able to figure that out.
So you mean? Is the data, I believe this data includes, um, S D T C cases?
Oh, okay, cool. That's, that's what I was trying to get at. It's inclusive, so it's the whole, um, that's good.
But I, I need to confirm that with you mean.
I, um, um, that's my understanding too.
Okay.
Great, thank you. That's a quick clarification. I'd like to spend some time on table one. And. You know, one of the, pop, you know, while, but, you, you know, while no one likes to see. The pending at year end continue to go up. It does appear. That. The number closed. Um, in twenty twenty-three. Does exceed what was closed in twenty twenty-two. So I view that as positive. And, you know, that number obviously, like, like George says. You know, you know, the goal is to get that number to be over the number, to exceed the number open during the year, so that the backlog goes down. The one concern that I do have on this. Is the mismatch. I know it says something about data frozen, but I've never heard that before. First time I ever heard of data being frozen. Um, but the pending at year end twenty twenty-two and the pending at year start twenty twenty-three. They should be the same number. They should be identical. And the fact that they're different, um, bothers me a great deal. Either one of the numbers is incorrect or they're both incorrect. And we don't have this for any of the other previous years. The year end and the year start is identical, and really. That, that's how it's supposed to be. I understand that. Uh, at the end of June, when you're doing your first trial balances, if you will, that the numbers don't match. But, um, I, I would like to, in the next week, before this is submitted to the legislature. I'd really like to see, um, those numbers to get unfrozen. And for whatever the number is, those numbers should match.
We, we can do that. I, I do have an explanation for why previous years match and this year doesn't. Uh, previous years is the first year we reported on fiscal year data. So we, so we pulled the data at the same time, no matter which year that was. This year, we, it's the second year, so we pull the data at different times. But, but we can find out which number is the most reliable, but. It, it's a common thing. I, 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 I'm not saying it's a good thing, but it's a common thing that. Uh, uh, you know, staff members backdate the data and change the date because they have new information. They update the number there. It's not encouraged, uh, so we should have a probably some policy like backdating that is not, uh, encouraged. But that's, that's a common thing in data field.
Thank you very much, Ian. I really appreciate your explanation, and I really very much appreciate your, um, commitment to. Um, you know, just cleaning, cleaning up the data a little bit and having the numbers be, um, you know, match. Thank you.
Well did.
That, 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 those are all my questions. Um, Chair Stallings, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other trustees have any, uh, questions for staff? Or comments? Yeah, I would just share in the, uh, uh, comments of my fellow trustees and thanking staff for, um. For the presentation of this report. I think that. You know, we continue to refine, uh, the process, refine the way it's presented to the legislature. And I think this does continue to, uh, present, uh, to the legislature that there are still. Uh, needs, uh, funding needs that the state bar has in order to meet our public protection mission. Um, certainly, as is laid out in the A D R. Uh, numerous, uh, things have been undertaken to increase efficiencies. And so looking forward to seeing how those bear fruit. Um. I think in regards to Trustee Tony's concern about, uh, table one, are we able to? Um. To pass a motion, uh, that will send this to the legislature, uh, to other various stakeholders. Um. With the, uh, with the possibility that that table could be, um, updated. With the most recent data.
The resolution does, um, give staff the authority to make those kind of changes. Maybe you can put that up, Louisa.
I'd like to move adoption.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, first by Trustee Tony, second by Vice Chair Sisneros. Madam Secretary, can we have the roll call, please?
What, Aventura?
Yes.
Chen?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Hi.
User?
Hi.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings? And I zero nays the motion carries.
All right, thank you so much. George and you, we appreciate it. All right, next we'll go to item seven hundred, uh, which is the proposed amended conflict of interest code for the Board of Trustees. This is a return from public comment and request for approval to submit to the Supreme Court. And there will be a discussion of additional conflicts and ethics principles and processes for trustees. Uh, we have, uh, General Counsel, uh, Alin Deftian. And, uh, Brady Dewar, who are going to be presenting on this, although I think that. Um, in the interest of time, we're just going to go directly to, um. Mister Dewar, so Mister Dewar, are you, uh, online here?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, Brandon.
There you go.
Uh. But we'll just jump right in. Um, uh, this item has two parts. Uh, the first resolution we will recommend that you pass. Approves first mission to the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of California, a proposed amended conflict of interest code for the Board of Trustees. Uh, the conflict of interest code for the Board of Trustees, um, uh, its primary role is to identify the financial interests that each of you as board members. Will need to disclose on your Form seven hundreds to be filed annually, uh, every April. Uh, the same disclosure requirements apply to, uh, upon leaving the board, uh, for leaving office Form seven hundred statements and for new members upon joining. At a high level, uh, you'll be required to report investments of over two thousand dollars, uh, income of, uh, five hundred dollars or more, or gifts totaling, uh, fifty dollars or more. Um, in any positions, uh, employment or, um, unpaid positions in. Um, first of all, any people or entities that are subject to the regulatory authority of the state bar, which is broadly speaking, the legal industry. Um, and, and second, any investments, income, gifts, or, or business positions at those thresholds. Uh, in persons or entities in California that sell the types of goods or services purchased by the state bar. Um, additionally, you, you'll be required to report any interest in real estate in or within two miles of California, uh, except for personal residences used for personal use only. Um, the code also sets forth the requirements to disqualify from participating in decision-making where these interests would be materially impacted. Um, as well as a prohibition, subject to exceptions, um, for accepting honoraria or gifts totaling five hundred and ninety dollars or more in a single year. From any source that would be reportable on your Form seven hundred. The code also contains a prohibition on accepting personal loans from state bar employees, contractors, or officers. We provided a detailed presentation on, on, on all of these requirements in the code in why. Uh, and their substance, the, the, the code that's before you now, um, those requirements and provisions are substantively unchanged, uh, from what you considered in July. Um, and in the interest of time, since you will be receiving a training on all of this in January. Uh, the agenda item, um, in my brief remarks here focuses only on the new change, on the few changes to be made, uh, to the proposed code. Since you last saw in July, uh, and before we, uh, uh, return it to the Chief Justice. So, um, a, a little bit of background, and this is in the agenda item. After the code was, uh, approved by you in July. It submitted to the Chief Justice in July, the Chief Justice returned it to us, uh, with several revisions. Um, these revisions did not change the substantive effect of the code, um, which again deals with financial conflicts. But rather, uh, made some changes and additions, um, to the, uh, background and introductory statement of the code. Added some explanations that noted, uh, that in addition to the code, uh, you as trustees are subject to. added some explanations that noted uh, that in addition to the code, uh, you as trustees are subject to disqualification requirements for personal conflicts set forth in the um, Business and Professions Code Sections thirty six, section sixty thirty six. Uh, and uh, the revisions from the Chief Justice also provided some more explanation of some of the terms used in the code. But again, they're they weren't substantive changes to the effect of the code. Um, after returning it to us on August thirty first, the Chief Justice directed the state bar to circulate the new version um, for public comment for thirty days and then to resubmit this Chief Justice with any additional revisions back October thirtieth. Um, according to those instructions, um, the proposed amended code was circulated for thirty days of public comment. Uh, that public comment period ended on um, October fifth. We received eight public comments. Um, those are attached to the agenda item at attachment C, and they're summarized in the item. Of those eight comments, uh, six were in support of the proposed amended code. One was opposed and one was in support with modifications. Um, as we explained in the agenda item, we don't recommend any changes in response to the public comments received. Uh, however, we do recommend several additional minor revisions that are set forth in red line in attachment A of the agenda item. These revisions are necessary to update references uh, in the code to conform to changes enacted through the fee bill in the State Bar Act um, related to personal conflicts and contracts related conflicts, and to make a few technical corrections to some of the explanatory language suggested by the Chief Justice. Um, additionally, we add one more example um, of the types of business that the state bar does business with, um, in which you will therefore have to report any um, financial interests in. Um, because these changes are required to conform to the current law, um, or or the uh, law as it will be in effect uh, uh, on January first, um, or are nonsubstantive and and very technical, we do not, we do not recommend sending them out uh, for further public comment, um, nor is uh, further public comment required. Uh, so therefore, um, we will recommend that you pass the resolution approving the revised proposed amended code and directing state bar staff to resubmit this Chief Justice um, for review and adoption back October thirtieth. Um, and you'd already directed us to do this in July, um, but we will pursuant to that instruction, update the board policy manual um, to reflect the new code once it is approved by the Chief Justice. Uh, and I, as I mentioned, um, in January, uh, there will be a training on on the new code and your obligations thereon there. Before I move to the second portion, do you have any um, co- uh, comments or questions about the uh, conflict of interest code? Right. Seeing none, I'll I'll move on to the.
Go for it.
Okay. Um, the second portion of the agenda item updates uh, the board on personal conflicts, fiduciary duties, and accountability measures. Um, following this brief discussion and any thoughts you might not want to share with us, we will ask for a direction to staff in this area, um, specifically, um, because the code focuses on financial conflicts only and based on uh, previous feedback from the board and the work of the Ad Hoc Committee on Accountability and Oversight Reforms, uh, we're going to ask you for a a direction to prepare proposed updates to the board policy manual um, addressing uh, personal conflicts, fiduciary duties, and accountability measures. And we bring those back to you uh, at the November board meeting. Um, briefly, uh, the the items that were the updates to the board policy manual that we are working on would discuss best practices uh, for the OGC to notify the board chair and vice chair uh, regarding um, any conflicts of interest advice that we provide to individual trustees. If that advice results in the conclusion that there is a conflict supporting disqualification and the trustee does not intend to disqualify. So this would uh, provide the board um, as a um, as a group, the um, the necessary knowledge uh, to take steps if an individual board member uh, did not choose to follow um, um, their advised uh, recusal and disqualification obligations. Um, the board uh, policy uh, book updates would also um, set forth a procedure by which the board could require a trustee to recuse themselves from a board decision in which they have a conflict in the event, again, that they declined to follow advice from the uh, Office of General Counsel to do so. Uh, the the revisions we're considering also establish, would establish grounds and procedures for board admonishment, sanction, and or censure of trustees who violate conflict of interest or other ethical obligations or principles, and establish grounds and procedures uh, for trustee, uh, excuse me, for the board to uh, refer to uh, individual trustees appointing authorities. Um, um, any misconduct uh, for those potential authorities to potentially uh, remove individual board members um, for serious misconduct. Uh, additionally, um, as discussed, because the conflict of interest code um, itself, which we're approving um, for submission to the court, focuses mainly on financial conflicts, uh, we're going to um, include in the board book revisions more discussion about personal conflicts and fiduciary duties of board members, including specifically um, the duty of loyalty. Um, in in preparing these updates, uh, we will also consider how the state bars recently or uh, adopted organizational values of clarity, investing in our people, excellence, respect, and growth mindset might be incorporated into the um, into the discussion of the ethical obligations. Um, you know, so that we we don't reinvent the wheel and and recognize that, you know, you can't have clarity, investing in our people, excellence, or respect, and a growth mindset as values fully realized uh, without also following these these ethical obligations. Um, and and with that, uh, we welcome any initial thoughts or questions you may have about these uh, topics and 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 proposed uh, updates to the board manual uh, to inform our ongoing work in advance of the next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dewar. Any questions? Yes, trustee Shelby.
Uh, Brady, thank you for that overview. Um, I think more of a a a comment per se, as I was looking at the, it was wonderful to see that in the public comments. Um, one of the public commenters was someone who sits on the Federal Elections Commission. So I thought that was, that was a positive thing to to see that that uh, we were getting reviewed by someone who has seen this work intimately on the federal level. My second comment is this, uh, and well, maybe this is a question. How do these changes compare to other public agencies or to the legislature? I mean, are we now the moniker of conflicts? Um, or are we, are we behind other entities? I think I know the answer to that, but I I would love to hear it publicly.
You know, my 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 take on that is that, uh, because as as part of this review, we've we've looked at various cities and um, uh, you know, o- other public entities. And some of them have sort of a standalone ethics code, and we're we're trying to pull some of their ideas from that into um, into our our board policy manual. Um, I I don't think that there's a, you know, in in financial conflicts, um, there's uh, very much a, you know, there's a model code, there's the FPPC, it's all very prescribed. And um, in in this other area, we are already compliant with what the law requires, but the law doesn't give much direction, which is why we're, you know, looking at, um, and it's not necessarily the large cities. We found some small cities that are, you know, doing unique um, and things in their codes, which we we might try and buy off of. So, or borrow borrow from. Um, so I I I, I don't know that we're we're leading or following, but but but, you know, we're we're in compliance and and we're sort of um, going the extra mile and and looking at some some best practices from around the state.
No, and I thank you for that. And I say that because I just think back to May of twenty twenty three earlier this year, when when a number of us had the opportunity to address the joint committee. And I think it's important in the spirit of transparency and accountability to be able to really sort of share that and say that, right? We 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 continuously talk about how we, this is a new state bar, this is a new board, how we're turning the corner, and and I I definitely believe these actions are reflective of that. But I also believe that we need to tout that loudly. So I think it's important to understand where we fall because in the future, when people have the opportunity to hold us accountable to our conflicts of interest, we can always be able to articulate to them how we have gone above and beyond, and maybe their entities have not. So I just wanted to voice that, but thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shelby.
All right. Mr. Tony.
Thank you. Um, I think one of the things that I would like in the um, not in this piece, but in the piece that looks at the non-financial conflicts of interest is guidance to trustees as to when it's a good time to seek um, to seek advice proactively. So that it's not just, you know, it's up to the um, you know, i- 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 it's not up to the general counsel's office to notify people. But I also feel that as trustees, we have some obligation proactively. So I'll give you an example, okay, a real live example that I am going to come to you with. And that is that I, you know, part of my responsibilities for my job is I do fundraising. Okay, and we're having a fiftieth anniversary next year. And we have always raised money from some of the law firms that we um, are, you know, um, in, you know, work with. But I wasn't part of the, I wasn't a trustee back then, okay? So one of the things that, for instance, I'm going to do, because I just think it makes sense to be proactive, is to have a conversation with your office and say, here's the situation. And how 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 do we look at the codes and see, is this permissible? Is it permissible under certain guidelines? So that it's not just, because see, sometimes when we become trustees, we can't always assume we can do the things we've always done before. That's what I'm thinking, okay? So having gu- guidance as to, here are some situations where you should proactively think about coming and getting advice would be helpful, I know to me, and I think it might be helpful to other trustees. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Tony. Are there any other questions or comments, or may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Louisa, can we put that um, that up on the screen? Thank you. All right. So we have a first by trustee Good. Do I have a second?
This is Hylen. I'll second.
All right. Second by trustee Chin. Madam Secretary, if we could have the roll call.
Buenaventura, trustee Buenaventura had to step out. Um, Chen?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Hi.
User? Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Nine eyes, zero nays, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you, George General Counsel, uh, Ms. Deftian and Brady. Thank you for uh, walking us through this and for just your thoughtful work in this uh, in this area. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all for the support.
All right. That concludes our open session items. Uh, we will now go into closed session, uh, pursuant to government code section one, 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 two, six, sub C, sub seven, and government code section one, 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 two, six, subsection E, subsection two, subsection A. And Board of Trustees will uh, should be receiving um, a link to our closed session items. I would anticipate that we should finish. Think we're we're slated to finish at about noon. Um, but we will see everyone on the other side. Thank you to those who tuned in on a Monday uh, for this uh, special uh, Board of Trustees meeting. We'll see everybody else on the other side. All right. Uh, this is the uh, special meeting, Board of Trustees on October twenty third. We've returned from closed session. There are no reportable items uh, to report out on. Want to thank everybody for attending on uh, this Monday. Have a good rest of your uh, week.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye bye.